Can I make this bigger? This in this? Can that box be bigger or that's as big as it can be?
Which one?
The one I look at.
Uh, no.
All right, that's it. Okay. Good evening. What day is today? No, it was. Welcome to the October 8th, 2024 regular meeting of the Milton Select Board. I'd like to begin by calling the meeting in order and ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, public comment. Public comment by policy is a total of 21 minutes. I don't see a huge crowd here tonight, so three minutes per speaker. I see no one online, so we'll begin with Mr. O'Rourke, who I believe is here. Chair of the School Building Committee. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Sean O'Rourke, 27, Corey Lane, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8, and Chair of the School Building Committee. Mr. Chair, I come before you tonight not as a citizen, but as Chair of the School Building Committee and to relay requests that were originally thought to be posed to this board in August by your appointed member to our committee. These requests are as follows. Essentially, a timeline associated with the potential spring ballot to allow School Building Committee to prepare and properly with our consultants and other town boards and committees. Secondly, a timeline associated with the fall town meeting to allow the issuance of warrant articles in preparation of their navigation through associated town boards and committees. Please keep in mind, this original request, we thought, was in August in anticipation of a December town meeting, which was why we stated it that way. Our committee is well aware that a December town meeting will not be occurring, which is concerning. Finally, comment resolution to the school building project. As you're aware, a number of original concerns were raised by this board over the summer, namely budget, timeline, land acquisition, and staffing as it related to your vote in August. All of these concerns were addressed. However, after they were addressed, additional concerns were raised by this board. The School Building Committee acknowledges the gravity of this project and welcomes any or all comments specifically from this board. However, to properly address these in a timely manner, enunciating these as early as possible allows us to work with our consultants to address it. The over, excuse me. The overcrowding of our schools and the construction of a new school in a timely manner is critical to the success of our students and faculty that have dealt with this over years. At a recent PTO meeting, the principal of our elementary schools indicated they are making it work, they are getting by. For me, this is unacceptable for our town and as it relates to our educational system and corresponding facilities. Addressing the overcrowding of our schools without further delay is essential to the success of our town. Now, in closing, I remind you, these concerns were raised in August. We are now in October, and these requests lie dormant. Similar to the presentation of an enrollment study presented to this board during Citizen Speak in the September meeting, it was then addressed at your following meeting, two weeks later on the agenda. The School Building Committee hopes similar courtesy will be afforded to our committee at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else for Citizen Speak, so that will, anyone else here for Citizen Speak? So that will conclude our Citizen Speak.
May I say one quick thing?
On Citizen Speak?
Is that okay?
You have to move up response.
Oh, it has nothing to do with that?
Go ahead. Oh, it's Citizen Speak?
Yeah, yeah.
You have to go over there.
Or I can say.
We can Citizen Speak too.
Whatever you like.
So I only because I've done it. It's anyone whose seat.
I wouldn't take time away from anybody, so.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to go over there?
No, go ahead. But in the few, normally like, because I only because I've done it twice.
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
You take the seat over there. But go ahead, you're there. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to.
Do you want to also say?
Oh, sure. So Roxanne Musto, Vice Chair of Select Board. I just wanted to bring something, a situation that happened about two weeks ago. I was with my husband, we were driving on Canton Avenue. We were one of the first people that came upon an accident scene where a commercial vehicle of a business in our town had crashed into a stone wall. And what I wanted to call this out for was for a few different reasons. Number one, there were some neighbors that walked up to the scene. I didn't know them. We were passing the scene. My husband said, oh, do you want to pull over? I said, yeah. So we pulled over, we both jumped out. These residents came up to the scene and the gentleman, there was a gentleman on the pavement in front of us on the sidewalk. So we went over to him and he spoke Portuguese. So I do know some Spanish. Of course, this other woman who came over, her Spanish was fantastic. And so we were able to talk to this gentleman and my husband spoke to him in Italian. And the point of this whole story is that I think it's a wonderful situation where people, you know, stopped, like these residents came walking over to assist this gentleman in this accident. We were there before the first responders got there and they were very quickly on the scene and responded and did a great job. But I guess my point is, and this is the overall point I wanted to say, is that Milton is a remarkable town made up of all types of people where I think it was a wonderful example of people coming out and helping each other. And I know of other people that have been in accidents in this town and things like that where, you know, people have come to the scene to help when they don't even know these individuals. And so I just think when we're dealing with a lot of different things in this town, just to remember that we have some goodwill in this town and some really remarkable people. And I, in particular, I don't know that woman's name who was there speaking with the gentleman, but I really wanted to acknowledge that she did a fantastic job. So thank you.
All good?
Yes.
Thank you. That'll conclude Citizen Speak. I think before we go any further, I know you don't intend to speak, but we have two young students who are residents of the town here tonight from Roxbury Latin School in West Roxbury. We're doing a school project on the comparisons of Milton Town Government today, the type of form of government that we have as compared to Athens, Greece in the first century, less than the first century?
Ancient, like in the ancient.
In the middle, in the, so welcome. And I know you don't want to start, I mean, you're just here to watch. It's not a lot to watch tonight, there's no big crowds, but thank you for coming and we're available for any questions afterwards. If you stay that long, there's going to be a quick meeting. Thank you. Okay. Item number four, which is a discussion update Massachusetts School Building Authority Statement of Interest Review Process is, most of you know, MSBA came here to view the, do a very comprehensive review of the Cunningham School, which is the school that was used by the town on our application regarding the overcrowding that Mr. O'Rourke's committee's been dealing with. It was very well attended. Both Mr. Cohen and myself were there, as well as the Chair and the Vice Chair of the School Committee, the Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Milano, a lot of people that you knew from MSBA, several, all the principals, both, both Mr. Redden and Ms. Concanon were both present. And I'm going to hand this over to you because fortunately for us, our town administrator came from MSBA and he was referred to on numerous occasions during the interview. And I kind of pass this off to, I put this on the schedule purposely because this is something that we didn't see coming in August, or we didn't know would happen. And if this were to occur, this is a huge thing for the citizens of Milton, if we're lucky enough to be accepting this. So Nick, I'll stop talking and hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, as, as Chair Wells mentioned, we had what's called a senior study on September 17th with representatives from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, as well as an architectural firm that they consult with to help them evaluate school buildings across the state. They shared with us that they had, they have received 47 applications to the program, what they refer to as their core program, which is for new school or addition and renovation projects in '24. They expect to invite in anywhere between 15 and 16-ish communities, using very round numbers on that. The last few years, they have invited into their building program 19, 10, 17, and 15 school projects. So you see how that range is certainly below 20. So where we are at in the process is that they are evaluating all statements of interest received, as I noted there, 47. Some, but not all, are getting what they call senior studies, which is where they come out and view the school directly. We should not read into the senior study as an indication of good, bad, or indifferent. They do these occasionally. Milton has not had a senior study in some time, although we had reapplied several different times. Other districts, which may have applied last year and had a senior study last year, won't get a senior study this year. So it's not necessarily an indication that Milton is ahead or behind anybody. It's just part of their information gathering process. Their review will continue over the next six to eight weeks or so, and they'll start informing cities and towns of their status end of November, early December, ahead of the December board meeting of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, where they will invite certain districts into the core program to commence working with the MSBA. So the process is still ongoing. There should be news in the next, like I said, two months-ish. By mid-December, we should know for certain whether the town is in or out. If accepted, just as kind of what the next steps might look like is, it's really starting the process over in terms of evaluating and designing a school project. The MSBA has initial processes and things that have to be accomplished, and then you move into forming a school building committee, selecting an onus project manager, selecting an architect, developing an education program for the school, evaluating options for school configurations, locations, et cetera, and then moving there through the MSBA process. So Milton has made a lot of progress in some of these things, so Milton might be in a position to move more quickly than other districts through that process, but all districts have to go through the comprehensive MSBA process. There's no shortcuts really for anybody that has maybe a little bit farther along than somebody else. Last thing I want to mention is that the reimbursement rate that they shared is about 45% if the town were to be accepted, but that has to be spoken about when, in only 45% of what's eligible. And a lot of things might not be ruled eligible for this project. There are caps within the MSBA program. For example, they will only reimburse on costs up to 10% of the total project for site work. So if it's a more intensive site work project, there might be costs that the town has to bear that the MSBA will take no part in sharing. They also set a cap on the per square foot cost that they reimburse up to. So a portion of the project will ultimately be ineligible for reimbursement because of the way that the program works and the grant program works. So a 45% reimbursement rate will really turn into a much lower actual reimbursement on the total project. And I did a quick look, so just to see something comparable. Folks may know, but Canton is going through the MSBA process currently for a middle school. It's a five to eight building, so it's bigger than the project Milton is looking at. It's about 1,000 students, 220,000 square feet. They have a $241 million total project budget. The grant from the MSBA is $74 million, and their reimbursement rate is 52%. But if you do the math there, the grant that they're getting is only about 30% of the total project budget. So when thinking about that reimbursement rate, it's important not to think it's, it would apply to the total project costs. And the last thing is, as I mentioned, that the town would go through the MSBA process, that is, it can be time consuming. The timeframe that they quoted was five to seven years until you open a building with the MSBA process. But that's just kind of a high-level overview of where things stand today and what that process might look like if the town were accepted. And again, we should have word of that in December, by the end of this calendar year.
Early December, it was, it was, the dates, yeah, very early. It's like the first week of December. Official, do you like official, like, anything else? You good?
No, that's all I had.
Questions?
Good question. Did we get everything that they were looking for? There was a list of, I know specifically Diane had asked for DESI numbers.
Yes, everything, so they had, there was an outstanding list of items that they had been asking for from both the district and from the town. So we've, we've provided that information back. They're looking for enrollment numbers as of October 1st, which is the official enrollment numbers for this calendar, for this school year. Building permit information, they like to have a sense of what growth might look like. So we provided them an analysis of what projects are either online, coming online, or could get building permits soon. And there was additional backup information about the work that the town has done to date and where things stand. So that, all that information has been shared with MSBA.
This is all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Milano, so maybe just clarify for me. So we have a school building committee, we have selected an OPM. Does that, would we scrap all of that and then have to start from beginning? Or would we be able to, I mean, it just seems like we would want to not, you know, duplicate work that's already happened.
That, those questions I don't have good answers to. Typically, the basic answer is you have to go through our process. For the school building committee, you have to have a school building committee that meets the rules and regulations of the MSBA. So that might just mean the school building committee that we have in Milton might need different members to have the school building committee that the MSBA requires and representatives from certain portions of the public and certain backgrounds. For the professionals, for onus project manager, there may be an opportunity to keep the same one, but will, that would be a question that we would ask if accepted and we'd have to see. For the architect, although the town has selected an architect through the designer selection process that state law requires, designers who work on MSBA projects have to be selected through an MSBA process. So that would be a place where we're certainly going through that process, probably will be going through the process for the onus project manager, but maybe the procurement process that we did would suffice. I would say it's better to think that we have to start over on all of it. But those are questions we'll certainly ask if the town were to be accepted in the future.
Can I just follow up to you? So to your question, Mrs., so they were very, were there five or six people? Each member, each, each representative had a specific topic or specialty that they questioned us on, a question? So there were questions to Mr. O'Rourke, there were a lot of questions to the Superintendent, there were questions to the school Superintendent, I mean, to the Chair, Ms. Cal, there were questions to me. There were questions to Mr., a lot of questions to Mr. Milano, but that was because it was clear that I think it's a benefit to us, the fact that, and I don't think it weighs into the total reason, but I think having Mr. Milano in the room and having the insider's understanding of what they do was a good thing, because a lot of the questions that they were asking, they went right to him with. They were very, very thorough in everything from, they toured the whole Cunningham, they, everything from history to not just, you know, the overcrowding issue, but everything from E to Z, the roof, the HVAC system, how much we're going to invest in capital in our schools over the next 10 to 15 years. Like, oh, yeah, Consultative Tom McCarty, like they, they did not leave a stone unturned. But, and again, even if it, 45%, but even a 30% real money, you're talking millions of dollars here that the town would stand to gain. But I do want to say, in finishing, I'm very thankful to them for being as in-depth and attentive to detail, if I use the term, with the community, with all the leaders as they were. And to your point about Mr. O'Rourke and the school building committee, they were able to present a lot of it. They know exactly where we are right now and what we've done. They know, and they know exactly what we're looking at for a number figure.
Can I follow up?
Sure, absolutely. I just.
So just a follow-up on this, on the composition of the school building committee. Are the regulations of what a school building committee should look like under SBA, is that public knowledge? Is that something we could find out, or is that something?
Yeah, they have the form on the, on their website. So it explains what personnel they're looking for.
I think it would behoove us to figure out if our school building committee right now matches that. You know, anything we can do, because as we heard from Mr. O'Rourke earlier, like this is extraordinarily pressing topic. Our schools have been overcrowded for years and it's only getting worse. So anything that we can do in advance of that decision that would expedite the process, I think would make sense. And if, if it's only limited to the composition of that school building committee, then fine, but if there is anything else, I think that we could line up so that if we get good news, which I think we all hope that we'll get good news, that we're ready to roll as quickly as possible. I'm, I'm set. We do, okay.
We have the, there's another meeting that was scheduled this evening, even though that person knew that there was a select board meeting, I had to step out.
Okay.
Yeah, same here. We will return.
We will return, but we have to step out for 10 minutes as another meeting was scheduled.
Did you turn that off?
My mic?
Yeah.
No, I just turned it on to say it. Now I'm turning it off.
Oh, good.
You knew what he was looking for.
Ms. Musto, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Milano. So I just was going to ask you, so did they factor, or would they factor in that we had a big school building project about 20 years ago? Does that factor into this decision at all, where we did all the schools? I'm just wondering.
It was under the prior iteration of the School Building Authority. It preceded the Massachusetts School Building Authority. But I think, I don't have a good answer to that. I think they take into account which communities have received assistance and which may not have. And if there are communities that haven't received any prior assistance that have the similar level of need as Milton, maybe that would outweigh us in our, in our ranking. But I don't, I don't have a good answer to that, other than I'm sure they take into account grants and communities that haven't, haven't received it.
I just want to ask one quick, a second.
This was to you.
Okay.
I did a lot of readings this weekend, and they do, they mentioned a date. I forget the exact how many years, but I do know that I counted back from 24 and it's beyond, our last project is beyond that window.
I thought they said, I thought they said that.
Yeah, I forget what the exact amount of years was, but, but it's beyond the window.
Okay. And then the second question was, when you get notification, whether you're in or out, does it go to the school department? Does it go to you? Does it go to both? How do they notify us?
I, they, so we obviously didn't, weren't accepted last year, and they sent, they notified us, I think at the end of November last year. And it was either, I think it was an email to myself and the Superintendent that we distributed from there. I believe that was, it may have been, I would have to look, I have it in my email, but they emailed us last year. I know I either received it pretty quickly or it was copied on it.
Okay, thank you.
If you're in, you'll know, you'll know unofficially several weeks before the official notification. So you'll know sometime, Ms. Milano knows sometime in November.
Okay, thank you.
If you're in. But they, they were very, at least to me, the parts that I picked up on, that they referred to with regard to the prior, the six school project that we did, was more about the capital needs, that like, they were understanding the ages of these schools and what we're going to be looking at. As I said earlier, everything from roofs to windows to HVAC systems, to all that stuff. They, they were, there was one member of their group that, that was specifically all he asked about. So we good, you good? We good?
And they did, they do mention in there that in the next phase, I looked into it, the eligibility period and the feasibility study, there's a whole process they go through for picking the project manager and the design team, and there's a list you got to go. So it is a kind of a start over, you know?
Yeah.
I'm not sure about the school building committee. Maybe they assume that you haven't had that, so you need to form one. But as far as the design teams, it's a duo, it's a start over.
I thought that I heard her say, the woman, I thought, to me, she was the senior one, the woman who sat diagonally across, that's when, against.
Diane Sullivan, right?
Yeah, the woman who sat in the back. I thought, it seemed to me that they were not telling us not to stay on the, like, not to just throw it away, but to be prepared to, like, kind of hold it, yeah, wait, go ahead.
I believe that was in the event, though, that we don't get approved this year. We can go the parallel path. If we don't get approved this year, we can still stay in the loop and move forward. But if we do get eventually approved, it's a start over, unfortunately.
But if we do move forward, let's say, and I hear, I hear, I don't want to, I know, I don't want to comment because he was in public. We've talked, like, we've, we've met with the Superintendent, the school chair on this, both of us. This is a hu, this, you know, I've, I've said all along repeatedly that, you know, to carry $170 million or any amount on the taxpayers' backs without, without any type of reimbursement is, you know, unbelievable mountain, not a hill, mountain to try and cross in so many ways. And so I've talked about the history of this, you know, we tried 20 years ago, attempted twice and it failed, and even when it passed, it only passed at 90% reimbursement, a $10 million gift that took care of a lot of what MSBA wouldn't cover. So I think we have to really pay attention and do everything we can to meet any requests they have to try and make this happen, because this is really critical to get into this program, I believe. And I think anyone who's looking at finances would understand the same thing. Not, not to discount the overcrowding issue, but that's why they were here. As you saw, you saw they were, they took a very in-depth tour and they were so many of us were in two groups, as you know, so. Anything else?
No, that's, I think that's it. We'll keep you posted if we hear any news or get any additional requests for information.
Okay. Item number five, discussion approval contract from Milton Municipal Institutional Network.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I didn't even have to say it, I'm like, Mr. Milano?
This is, so this is for the broadband project. The institutional network is the fiber that connects all of the town and school facilities and only the town and school facilities. This has been the work of the Municipal Broadband Committee over the last several years to get to a place where the INET project is designed and ready to go out to get pricing. That project was designed and completed, the procurement documents were released in August and September. Proposals were due in September. We received a proposal from Contract Corp. with a total project price of $865,000 to supply and install fiber in accordance with the design that would connect all the town and school facilities to replace a current system, which is a six-strand fiber network that is end of life, that is, that we're paying a lease annually to Comcast to maintain and keep active. Comcast would very much like to take that project and network offline and decommission it. We've been grateful for their partnership in keeping that going. But the proposal is to build out the INET as designed, project price of $865,000. It would be paid for through several different sources of funding. We have an application into Norfolk County for $550,000 for ARPA funding for this, as the board is aware. $150,000 in ARPA money on the town side, the treasury side to the town, is allocated for the project. In addition, we received a state earmark of $200,000 for this work. So those appropriations will cover this cost. And then there is also a town meeting appropriation that will help with any additional costs, primarily related to the electronic equipment to make the system work as designed. The scope of work is for the fiber only. We will still have to procure and install additional new electronics as the project is being completed to make the system work the way it's fully intended to work, to be a fully redundant system. So broadly, the design is fiber between all the town and school facilities with what's called two cores. So right now, all the fiber comes into the middle school. If something were to happen that knocks out the middle school, the town's entire network would go down. Under this design, there would be a core at the middle school and a core at the high, at the town hall to provide redundancy. And every physical location on that plan would have two connections back and forth. So one wire going down does not take down either the whole system, and one wire going down does not knock out a building, which could happen today. So it's a redundant network designed with. So it's a redundant network designed with designer, and now we have pricing to build it out.
Ms. Masto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Milano. So how much do we think the electronics might run? That's the first question. The second one is, can you explain a little bit to people that are watching what happens if something does go down? Who maintains the school side and who maintains the town side? And how, if there's an issue with either, how that's taken care of?
So I'll go in reverse order. So in terms of inside the buildings and how the technology works, the town IT director, Rob Mallett, and the school IT director, Bob Patterson, they manage everything within the building. The network between buildings is what we lease from Comcast. They have to maintain, to maintain the network. If something goes down, they have the right to charge us for any cost to recoup their expenses to repair. We've been lucky. There haven't been any major issues. Going forward, this would be fully owned by the town. So there would be ongoing potential need for repairs, just as there would today. And then electronics, we had an initial quote, an expected price of about $75,000 additional for the electronics. The total cost of the project we expected was going to be about 1.1 million. And this pricing came in more competitive than expected. So we're already below where we expect it to be. So we expect to have money left in that appropriation, that town meeting appropriated that could be used for something else potentially. I don't want to count any chickens until, I don't know the rest of the phrase, but once the project's complete, we're hopeful that we will have surplus funds.
Thank you.
So would this include, because I may be outdating. So I've lived through this many times in my prior life. At the original core, we didn't have generator backup. I think we added that generator about 10 years ago. So when we move, will we have to add generators to any of these sites or do they all have?
So the two sites that serve as the core will have generator backup, town hall and the middle school. So they'll be.
It's a critical thing in stores.
They probably already do now.
They do presently. There's nothing changing on that.
Yeah, yeah. So that, those generators will provide power for this.
Okay, we good? Good on this? Do we have to approve this?
Just a need a vote. Yep, please, thank you.
So could I have a motion to approve the contract for Milton Municipal Institutional Network?
So I'll make a motion to approve the contract for Milton Municipal Institutional Network with Contract Corp.
Second?
Can I, I second?
Yep, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Item number six, discussion approval, state election warrant, November 5th, 2024. There's an election on November 5th? You gotta be kidding me.
Sorry to break it to you.
Can't come soon enough.
I need some humor in my life right now. Mr. Milano, this is you.
The election warrant is prepared by the town clerk and we like to have a formal vote approving the election warrant, just to get that out there and host the election on the 5th.
So can I have a motion to approve?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the state election warrant dated November 5th, 2024.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McCoy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, me too, unanimous.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, while we're on it, the early voting will commence later this month. Will, mail-in voting will be in place. There are a number of ballot questions this year, so when you get your ballot, make sure to keep an eye out for the ballot questions. It's probably a few pages, so just be prepared when they arrive.
I thought I heard a statement yesterday that two ballots.
That's.
Is that many questions?
I heard, I heard that yesterday, that there's two, a ballot for candidates vote and a ballot for questions. I thought I heard that yesterday. I don't, I thought I did hear that. Okay, item seven, discussion approval, committee appointments, reappointments. I don't have that one. What you doing? So could I have a motion on?
I think you have to fill out.
Go ahead. Okay, listen, go ahead, John. Mr. Cohen.
I have a lot of questions. I've done a lot of research and I see that the terms run from 8/15. And there are nine members. And my first question is why are we only?
Which committee are you referring to?
It must be, is it capital? Is that the one?
You're referring to capital improvement?
That's the first one.
Capital improvement, I'm the chair, go ahead.
Yeah, so my question is why are we only reappointing four when we should reappoint everybody, no?
Because these here are members that are determined by town bylaw, which represents schools, warrant, if I, if I'm correct.
I have the bylaw in front of me.
Yeah, schools, warrant committee, library trustees. So these are reappoint, and the finance director, so.
So there's, there's yourself, Jim Davis was on the, for the planning board.
Yep.
Tom McCarthy.
Yep.
Hale and Driscoll for the community at large.
Yes, there's, yeah, one, two, three people in the community at large, yeah.
And, you know, in addition to the warrant, the library, the school and the finance director, of those people too, the.
They were already reappointed.
When was, when did that happen?
We reappointed them several months ago when Mr. Wells was reappointed, when the select board appointed its boards and committees. Remember, we did that shortly after the election, the meeting or two after the election. The planning board had already, they also reorganized their members on other boards and committees. So they had notified us of their reappointment of Mr. Davis, so that was done then, and the others. So everything has been done over the last, course of the last several months. These four had not yet been reappointed for this upcoming term.
And these will all expire next August 15th?
They'll go through this.
Everybody.
Correct. Everybody is reappointed on an annual basis.
And so my next question is, who's responsible for updating the website with the information that, of all these committees? Because it's haphazard.
I don't know, Rob?
We, it's between our office, the town clerk's office and IT, we try to take care of it. If there's places where information is missing or outdated, let us know. We'll take a look at it.
I'd like to get, I'd like to get together and talk about that. Another thing here is there was a report that was supposed to come back from this committee October 1st, per the bylaw, of what the five-year recommendation is for all of these capital improvements. Does that exist? Is that happening?
Where'd you see that?
In the bylaw.
That's never been the time to, but.
I've never seen that.
So the only.
Well, go ahead, you go.
I was just gonna say where we're at now is capital requests are being requested from departments now and they're due back at the end of this week from departments. We then consolidate, prepare the requests and get them all on a five-year plan, present them to the capital plan. And that's what kicks off our capital planning process. And those meetings will now happen over the next couple of months to evaluate the requests and recommend the fiscal year '26 capital budget, along with an outline of what the five-year requests are.
I'm just, all offices, boards and committees, including the select board and the school committee, shall by October 1 of each year give to the committee on forms prepared by it, information concerning all anticipated projects requiring town meeting action during the ensuing five years. So we should have a report.
We don't usually hold it through October 1st. We usually get it through, and I, to be honest with you, I've been on that committee for eight years. The department heads, it's a really good about, and I give Amy a lot of credit because she was there before I arrived. Keeping these five years, I mean, it's, it's a hard thing to do. There are millions of dollars in requests. And truthfully, it's very rare that we ever fund more than a one. If you get a one, you're lucky. I mean, you're.
Right, I'm just trying to get to committees doing what they should do.
This committee does do that. They do what they do.
This committee does kind of work.
No, I'm not saying nobody's doing.
And we're streamlining it down into the fact that it took so long. Because when I got there, we spring in every department head, every, like, have them all make, it would take weeks. Now they, they submit them to Mr. Milano first. And then we only bring in a department head if there's something really significant and I give any. But to be honest with you, I probably already know, not off the top of my head, but I could do a pretty good job of telling you what like police, fire, DPW, like what they're. I know, I can tell you what DPW is. I know right away. Like, I mean, on the library, I can tell you that. Like their, their requests don't really change too often unless something happens and there's a curveball and something comes up that you have to, something fails or like you, obviously you have, or something sunsets and it's no longer can support it and now suddenly you have to report it, replace it right away. But the October 1st, I don't, those reports don't even come, they go to Mr. Milano. I mean, that, that language has to predate the Strong Town Administrator. That's how old I think that is with you. Because I don't think I've ever even read that.
Just stating facts, you know what I mean? That's what, that.
You're more than welcome. Come to any one of our, I mean, when we start meeting, people come, come to one. And you'll see the diligence that takes place. When I started as a deputy chief of administration submitting capital budgets for the chief, it was a paper exercise. This town invested nothing in capital. And there has been, I can't even tell you how much work between this town administrator, prior town administrators, Amy, Bill Ritchie, Tom Mc, so many different department heads to try and make sure that we take care of some of these infrastructure costs and meet these capital needs because they were neglected for so many years. That's why I say it's lucky if you get a one. And that's still making a significant commitment to meet the one request.
I'm not questioning effort. I'm not questioning effort. I'm just questioning result. The result is this should be a report that I should be able to look at, anybody should be able to look at.
Anyone can look at it. Once it's done, anyone, people, residents have asked for it, looked at it. Once, once we're done and it's ready to go, but we're still in the, we haven't even met yet for this yet. It's too soon.
Okay, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of the committees. I'm not saying anything. You know, this is what it says we should be doing and.
That's what, right, if you're gonna, if you're gonna charge me with a violation of the bylaw, okay, we're violating the bylaw. But we're also working with our department heads to collect all of our departmental budget requests over the past several years. We also have their five years of requests, so we're really just generating an additional year of requests and their priorities for the upcoming fiscal year, because we've already got a fiscal year '25 to '29 capital plan requested and received. So I understand what the bylaw says. I can tell you the work is underway. The request is due this week and we'll start meeting with the capital committee in the next several weeks to begin this process. And that ties out to what a typical budget year will look like on an annual basis. If the request is to have this done on October 1st, the committee can direct that and we'll do that. But we have tried to triage the work we put under department heads to get the operating budget requests in, done. Now we're doing capital. It's a lengthy process and it takes some time before we even have.
What's a better date than October 1st then? What's a better date?
I'm gonna want to look at that. I don't even want to answer it now, but I'll look at that. Go ahead, Ms. Masto.
Thank you. So perhaps, Mr. Milano, maybe just look at, you know, what the charge is and what the bylaw says. And maybe that's something we just have to go back and adjust, that it makes, so it makes more sense for us in terms of how we do things in this town? I don't know.
October 1st, way, way premature.
We change, consider changing it then, you know?
I mean.
If you want to or however you want to do it, I don't know.
We do have a bylaw review committee. The work hasn't been done. But like, I think the other thing is, you know, the operating budget requests are owed to the warrant committee by December 1st. We have, we met that last year. Town hasn't always met that too. So I, we do a budget process the best we can with the demands that our department heads have. October 1st definitely speaks of a time when each department is submitting their own requests directly to the capital improvement planning committee, which then is evaluating them directly with each department and with each board or committee, rather than the process set out under the town administrative special act where it's a more consolidated approach.
So I guess what I would, I'm sorry to follow up on that. Then maybe what it would just be better to do is just to do something that's more realistic, that's all. You know, in the future, like, look at it at some point and try to make it so it's a more realistic timeline. If you need to put a timeline on it, I don't know.
I don't think it needs to even be in there.
You know what I mean? Like, maybe it doesn't.
I don't think it needs to even be in there, in my honest.
But maybe that's just something to, you know what I mean, to look at at some point as to, you know, does it need to have that kind of timeline in it and is it realistic, right, for what you do?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think the town bylaws could use a fresh review and look. I think that's fair, but I just.
Then that's what we should do, you know?
So the end of this, the bottom line is, is the report ready? I was talking October 1st, no.
No.
Will it be ready by December 1st?
No.
Potentially, but probably not, maybe the end of the calendar year. But the, the first step in that process, which is where we collect all the capital requests, those are due in the next week. And that, that really gets the ball rolling on the rest of the work from there. And we, we triaged it this year to get the operating budget stuff in earlier and backpedaled on the capital because of the focus around the operating budget and the bigger questions around the operating budget that we're going into in '26. So we really wanted to nail those down. That's what we asked them to focus on over the summer.
We good? Can we make our reappointments?
Could I add a friendly amendment?
What is it?
I guess, I'm just trying to be clearer for everybody. If we can't do it online or whatever, I was just gonna say at the end of the motion, we just add ending on August 15th, 2025 or something, so that we're clearer as to, some way to let everybody know when these things begin and end. That's, I'm just, maybe it's something we just got to make sure it gets done online.
So the website says it's a one-year term that commences on August 15th of each year.
Yeah. We make this, we make this reappointment every year. It doesn't change.
I know, it's, but it's, the way it says it, it's a little fuzzy. If you read the bylaw, it says appointed this year and it.
And there's a link to the full bylaw. But when I was creating the website and updating how the board and committee's information is related, I wanted four succinct bullet points, appointed by a number of members, term in the charge. And if people were interested in what the more specific information around the term was, you can click right on the bylaw and it'll bring it right up. But it says term, one-year terms that commence on August 15th of each year, to try to distill kind of some of the key information, while also providing backup information to people who want to look up in a little bit more detail, like you're speaking to.
And in other instances, it says right beside the person's name, the month and the date that their, that their, they expire.
Yes.
So we could do that here and just write terms end, all terms end. You don't have to put it beside everybody, but all terms end August 15th, 2025.
I'm happy to do that if that's the request, but now I'm, we're updating this every year, even though it's crystal clear to somebody that.
I don't do that.
But you're updating the rest of them every year too, when you appoint new people and you change their dates.
That's fine. I'm happy to do that if that's.
Just trying to make it clearer.
So we're on item?
Seven A.
Seven A, reappointment of the four members of the capital improvement planning committee. These are the reappointments of the designated members, representatives of, to include the finance director, the representative for the school committee, the representative for the warrant committee and the representative for the library trustees, which, Mr. Cohen had asked for a friendly amendment to have this note. What is it you want?
These terms ending on August 15th, 2025.
I just don't know if I'd want to include that because it already says in the bylaw that it ends, that it ends there.
Then could we not do the amendment, but just put it on the website when the terms end? It's, it's on everybody else's. All the other committees say when the terms end.
It doesn't have to be in the vote, but we can do, you can do that, right?
Yep.
You can do that?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So has there been a motion?
No, I need a motion.
I will move to appoint this, the.
Reappoint, reappoint.
Reappoint the following individuals to the capital improvement planning committee. Amy Dexter, Elizabeth Carroll, Lori Connolly and John Folcarelli.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Item seven B, Milton Cultural Colony reappointments. We have two, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint, reappoint. Armory Downs files and Kathleen Potter to the Milton Cultural Council.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item C, Milton Cultural Council Appointments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint.
Can I discuss first?
After the motion.
Well, she can, when you make a motion and then you can get her to make a motion.
Yawa, I'm gonna, I hope I don't do this wrong, Yawa Degobi?
Digbo.
Degbo.
I think it's Digbo, yeah.
And Elizabeth Dillon to the Milton Cultural Council.
We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cohen, discussion.
Are they replacing or are these two new members?
Ms. Degbo and Ms. Dillon are new members to the committee, to the cultural council.
I believe there's additional, am I correct? I think there's additional spots there on top of these.
There, we can. I just wonder, did we discuss this? Why are we doing this? Is there?
They applied.
And the cultural council requested that they be appointed.
Who did?
The council requested that they be appointed.
Okay. I just would like to be aware of it ahead of, right now, and discuss it with them, but.
Discuss it with the applicants?
With the cultural council?
Yeah. Why do they, I mean, I see good and bad for adding people. If there's a whole lot of work to be done and you need more people to do work, okay. But more people to make a decision complicates things too. So I just want to make, I want, I'd want to know why they're requesting the two new ones. I don't know that.
People express interest in volunteering for the town and doing work for a council. So I don't see, if the council is telling us that they want to do it, it's not like the Milton Cultural Council is, you know, setting war.
Milton Cultural Council is, you know, setting war policy or something.
No, I'd just like to hear it from them.
So they filled out, Mr. Milano, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. We, back in the day, revamped this whole thing and part of that was creating an, an application which was universal for all things. My question is, is did these, the people that are asking to be appointed, did they fill out that?
Yes.
Thank you. So it's on record in the select board's office. I'm sure it's been emailed to us.
It's in our packet.
It's in our packet. So we all had notice of this. And so, well, the packet came out, what, Friday? I don't know what day it was it came out. So we all know about this. And again, I'd like to plug that we would love to have more people in town apply for committees at all times. It's one of my mantras, I say.
And I'll just, one nuance to this one is one member did step down and was not, asked not to be reappointed. So it's, it's a net of one additional new member, not a net of two additional members. Just Stephanie Truesdale is not being, had requested not to be reappointed and is stepping down.
Ms. Mostyn.
Thank you. Mr. Milano, could you just also explain how this committee, is it a, a stat, by statute? And could you explain, you know, I think it has a range on it?
Yes.
And so it, there's no, I guess my question is, is this is by statute the number, right? So it's something we could adjust?
Yeah, state law.
Or is it? I don't know.
The cultural council receives grant funding, which it then is allowed to disperse. All cities and towns have cultural councils that are allowed to disperse great fan, great grant funding, excuse me, received through the state. So it's set up by statute, that's general law. I don't know that in front of me, but I think it's a minimum of five members, up to 22 members. Ours currently has six. With this change, it would have seven with the overall increase of one in the three-year terms and they're set up by statute.
By statute. Thank you.
We good? Right of vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, discussion approval, one-day liquor license. We have one, two, three, four. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Bradley.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the following one-day liquor licenses. Break Rock Brewing at 534 Victory Road in Quincy for Mel O. Musical. First Annual Halloween Gala fundraiser on October 25th, 2024 from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Forbes House Museum, which is located at 1215 Adams Street.
Two fifteen.
Sorry, 215 Adams Street, Milton, Massachusetts. And then I'd like to continue by saying.
Keep going.
I would like to, one-day liquor license for St. Agatha Church at 432 Adams Street. Second Annual Feast, October 19th, oh, my parents' wedding anniversary, 2024 from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And finally, the Milton Art Center at 334 Edgehill Road. Halloween stroll on October 26th, 2024 from 3:00 to 5:00. And the holiday stroll and tree lighting on December 7th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m.
I'll second.
Mr. Carvackio is not missing anything. Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number nine, discussion approval, meeting minutes, August 27th and September 10th, 2024.
Want to take those separately, please?
All right, so I'll start with discussion approval, meeting minutes for August 27th, 2024.
I'll move to approve the amended meeting minutes for August 27th, 2024.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain.
Okay, so.
I wasn't there.
Okay, very good. That's, I know, I figured there was a reason. So four in favor, one abstention, Ms. Bradley. And now I'll do, do we have a motion for September 10th, 2024? I'll make the motion for September 7th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms., go ahead.
And I have a discussion.
A discussion for that? Okay, go ahead.
For that one. So in that one, we have the amended meeting minutes. Some of the amendments I have questions about. One of the amendment is to capitalize the word cancer, which is not a capitalized word. It's not a proper noun. So I'm wondering if we can take that change away because it's not proper to capitalize it. And then the second amendment that was made on these meeting minutes, had to do with Mr. Cohen adding a section about how he had not received the information prior to that meeting. I went back and I looked specifically at the meeting in question and I quote, "He just got them yesterday at 1:08:50." And he said, "I haven't had a chance to review it." But he did, in fact, receive all the information at the meeting prior. So the amendment that is being made is not factually correct according to the meeting. And again, folks.
I don't know what you're quoting.
I'm quoting you from.
I did not receive those before that meeting.
On the meeting on September 10th, if you go to 1 hour, 8 minutes and 50 seconds, you say, "You just got them yesterday."
Somehow that's out of context because I did not get them. I had to get them that week.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we table these? Let's work it out.
I have it queued up if anybody would like to see it.
Let's table this one for now, work it out, and then, you all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving right along. Item number 10, Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tell us about the baby.
Yes, my wife gave birth on September 23rd to our third baby boy. Thank you very much. Nicholas James, he is a junior.
Are we calling him junior?
We're gonna go Nicholas for now.
Okay.
I attempted Nico and I was overruled on that one.
Thinking that I'm a junior.
But no, thank you very much. Everybody's doing really well. The two older brothers are very happy. This baby is sleeping extremely well, a little too awake at night, but you know, we'll give him a little bit of leave to get used to days and nights. Just thanks to everybody for your support and for the team at Town Hall for keeping everything moving while I was out. I have likely not fully caught up to everything yet, so if you've reached out over the past couple of weeks and are looking for a response from me, feel free to email, call, or ping me this week. I'm back, but still kinda catching back up with everything. Tom McCarthy is serving as interim DPW director presently after Chase's departure at the end of September. We began the interview process last week. Some more interviews taking place this week as a first round. We'll follow up with a second round of interviews over the next couple of weeks as we work towards finding a new director of public works. Director of Planning and Community Development, Tim Zerwinski, gave us his notice that he has accepted a job and will be leaving Milton at the end of November. Will begin a new job in December. So two tough losses and two months here in Town Hall. So I hope nobody else has any grand plans and continues to work for the town, but we wish Tim the best. It's been a topsy-turvy 18 months, 24 months, and Tim weathered a lot, attended countless meetings, countless forums as that job is required to do in addition to a full work week every week. So he will be sorely missed. We were lucky to have him for as long as we did in terms of serving as an assistant planner and then returning to stints, yep, as the full-time planner. So I will miss him, but we wish him the best of luck. But he will be around. He gave us plenty of notice, which we are immensely grateful for. So he'll be here through November. We are working on getting that position posted and starting the search process for a new director of planning and community development. So.
He's gonna miss the traffic commission meetings immensely.
And for anybody listening out there who might be interested in municipal planning, it's an incredible job. Get to work on basically everything that happens in town. So please reach out if you have any interest. The employee flu clinic was held this afternoon, so thanks to the health department and Board of Health for coordinating that. There is a town-wide flu clinic for October 16th and October 17th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. here at the Council on Aging. Information on the town website on how to register, but please get your flu shot. It's nice and early. And for anybody who has a newest child, which I didn't know, there's now an RSV antibody administered drug, which eight months or younger can get. And anybody who has an infant knows if you've gone to the hospital, it's mostly because of RSV. So just sharing that information. The town is not providing it, but call your pediatrician. Our baby has it all right, so he's all set. MBTA Communities Act oral arguments at the Supreme Judicial Court were held yesterday morning. That video is now available online for anybody who didn't watch it, was interested in watching it. It's not quite an hour long to watch the whole oral arguments. Suffolk University posts the video, so you can search for it through Suffolk University and Supreme Judicial Court. It's also on YouTube under the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court page. And lastly, we had a fatality unfortunately last night on a car crash on Randolph Ave. One victim unfortunately passed away. The other driver was also injured and will likely be seeing, some charges will be brought forward on that. So a Randolph Ave crash, which we have too many of as it is, and you know, condolences to the family of the victim there. So just wanted to mention that.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So thank, thank you, Mr. Milano, again, Mazatoff on your, on your little one. Just two quick questions. On the flu clinic, are the COVID shots available also or is it just flu shots?
Just flu.
I looked at the post, I didn't see COVID on it.
Just wanted to, just wanted to clarify. Also, good idea to get your COVID booster. Second question is, obviously, you know, Tim's loss, Chase's loss, it's really, you know, unfortunate for the town. I personally was very concerned about the work environment that Tim was in and some of the language that he was subjected to in his role. And I'm just curious to know if we, we conduct exit interviews for folks to understand and then, like how that, how that worked and particularly for recruiting somebody else to come in. I worry that if someone watched some of the meetings that, you know, Tim participated in, one where he had COVID and, and was still sort of subjected to question about why he wasn't present, I would wanna make sure that we're, from an HR perspective, giving a really good understanding of why we lose talented folks like that. I understand the private sector pays more than the public sector. I mean, it's a real loss and I think understanding the factors that maybe led to his decision to leave would be helpful for you as a, as a town administrator and for us as a select board.
Sure. No, we certainly have those conversations, have exit interviews, but he and I have had conversations all throughout. I'll just say that policy decisions at this town are made by the elected boards that staff work for and we understand and appreciate and value feedback. But blame and attacks on staff or policy decisions that are made by elected bodies is something that it's hard for staffers to bear that when they're putting in a lot of hours. So it's something we spoke about through the process. I tried to share that publicly, that, you know, if there are frustrations or concerns, you can call me. Please reach out to me. But we want an environment where staff feel welcome and, and I, we have that, I think we have that, but we just wanna make sure that as these hot button issues arise, you know, my, my team stays out of the line of fire is all that I ask.
Also, don't yell at Nick.
That's all right. That's what I'm here for. But you know, it's, town planning is, it's a hard job. It's a lot of hours. I think that's what folks don't see is, you know, it's the full work week, it's the night meetings and that's in any city or town. So it's, it's, it's a great rewarding gig, but it comes with a lot of demands and we're grateful to people that enter that profession knowing that. But it also, I think, causes a little bit of burnout at, at times. We get that and we see that from time to time.
It's, it's gone back, I'm just going back, the plan is what I can think off the top of my head going back 20 years and similar things happened all, you know, just. So you're 100% correct, it's a correct job, but to Mr. Zoll's point, thank you to Tim for his service. He's, he's been in municipal government now for over 10 years between us and the city of Boston. He does believe passionately in the things that he believes in. We've had many long discussions, so good and bad, but you, you good on that?
I'm all, I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
So I'm just gonna add to yours. I can be part of mine. So the EPA and NEPA announced on Tues, was it Tuesday? What day was it, Tuesday? That the first piece of the super fund cleanup of the up and, low in the parts, up and, yeah, up in the parts in, in High Park has been completed. And they're now going to be moving this way, but it's still, but just, it's, it's a, is one person explained to me the other day, one resident, it took years to get us, I mean, I think they came in my second year here and we're just, seven years later, they're just getting the first piece of it. So not to let anyone forget, but this, this contaminant extends the entire length, not the freshwater, but also the Milt Worf all the way at the saltwater basin all the way to the mouth of the park. And it's, this is gonna go well beyond all of our times here. Maybe not Mr. Milano's to get this, but I am, I am pleased to hear that one, the first phase has been completed and that they're continuing to work, move forward on that. And then the second thing, I just wanna congratulate Christine Stan and all the staff, all the volunteers here this weekend who had their Friends of the Council on Aging benefit, fun walk, raffle, mom's sale. It was well-attended. I wish the walk was longer like it was last year, but it was, but it's, it's a great credit to all the staff here as well as all the friends. I wanna give a shout out to our former colleague, Katie Con, as well as both of her sisters who do immense work in making this happen every year and congrats to them. You know, a lot of people walk in this building, particularly for our meetings and other meetings, and they don't realize the lifeblood that this breeds for the seniors that come in here each and every day. So congrats to all of them. Anyone else? Okay. Item 12, public comment response. I think we kinda already talked about why Mr. O'Rourke was here and I understand that, and Mr. Milano has been meeting regularly with both the superintendent and, and the chair to try and formulate a plan for how we're gonna, to keep apparel plan going, should we not be accepted. But right now, I think the big thing is that we get accepted. Go ahead, Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Just to Mr. O'Rourke's comment, I think that the final question that he asked, he, was that the SBC received the same response that other folks have received in terms of being put on the agenda. And it's, it seemed to me very clear that he was asking for SBC to be on the agenda for the next meeting. And I think, given, you know, that there may be some work, maybe Mr. Milano could be providing an update, for example, on the composition of the school building committee vis a vis the, the rules from MSBA, it would make sense to have that as an agenda item for our next meeting.
So no disrespect to Mr. O'Rourke. We do have a school committee chair and a superintendent, which I met personally with, and we decided that they were at the point where they weren't ready to bring this forward here. So to me, until, yeah, otherwise from, from, until Mr. Milano hears otherwise from them, and I'm not putting any pressure, like they've got a lot of balls in the air right now. I'm fine with that when they're ready with, ready for that. Go ahead.
So if I may, one of the reasons I believe that he cited was the questions that were raised by members of this board and they're, they are anxious to begin to work on.
I get that.
Providing the answers.
I get it.
And for us to be in a public meeting to sort of state what those questions are, you And for us to be in a public meeting to sort of state what those questions are, you know, I think that makes the most sense. So again, I think that...
I get it.
It would make sense.
So, Mr. Chair, if I can, to piggyback that, I specifically, on that September 10 meeting, asked that this be placed.
I know you did.
So my next question then, Mr. Chair, is what's the protocol now for future meeting agenda items? Because it's been two meetings since I requested that as a member of this board, and it has not been made on either of those agendas. So I'm wondering if there's a new plan that we use or something that we should do?
There isn't.
So is there a reason why my request at that September 10 meeting for this to be on the agenda has not happened yet?
So as I just stated, Mr. Milano and I met extensively with both the chair and the superintendent. I don't want to speak for them, as you can surmise, there are a lot of issues in play here. I don't think they're 100% ready. I know that Mr. O'Rourke has his request, but I don't think they're 100% ready to bring that forward, and when they're ready, I'm more than ready to bring them in and do it.
But I thought, it's my understanding that these are two separate things that we're talking about here, because the School Building Committee, whether or not we receive this funding, it still needs to move forward with some of these questions that have been posed to the Select Board, specifically around timelines for the meetings. Also at that meeting, he has put out on August 14, he's asked for questions to come from this board, because, see, what happens here, Mr. Chair, is that...
I'm fully aware of what happened.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
This will come up. He will come to the meeting, and then we will pose 20 questions and say, "We can't make a vote because we don't have answers for these questions." If you go back and you look at this over the last two years, that's what's been happening. And so what he is asking is that this board put together our questions for the School Building Committee, because whether or not we receive that funding does not hinge upon whether or not we need to move forward with something for a school.
You're correct.
And so our questions need to be posed to him and the School Building Committee, which is tasked by this by town meeting members, not the Select Board. And so...
I didn't say it was us.
I am curious as to why now two weeks, a month, have gone by, that we still have not discussed what these questions are, because when this comes back to us, that's gonna be the first thing that's said, and it's gonna say, "I don't have enough information, so I can't take a vote," and we're gonna postpone it again. And so what I'm asking you, Mr. Chair, is what is the process to get this back on the agenda?
So to me, as I just stated, when I believe that the school committee and the superintendent are ready, because I do believe, as we recall back to when we took our vote, that it is still in flux as to exactly what we're going to be, whether, absent MSBA? And you can quote me if I'm, you were in the meeting as well, if I'm wrong, Mr. Milano. It's still in flux as to exactly what they're going to ask us to build on their part. And so I think to persist down the road that we were on previously without hearing directly from them exactly where they want to be, not the school building, because that doesn't rest with the School Building Committee. That rests with the school committee and the school administration. And I'm just telling you without, because I'm not them. I'm only telling you where I'm at based on my discussions with them.
Okay, so you're informing me at tonight's meeting that the reason why this has not been on our agenda is because the superintendent and the school committee is not ready for it to be on the agenda?
I don't think they've definitely finalized exactly what they want to move forward on. And that's as much as I'm gonna say on it tonight.
Can I just add to that?
Sure. It's on the agenda, so I don't want to go outside a public comment response.
Yes, that's a great point. So I think from my perspective, then suggesting an agenda item of questions that the Select Board has for the School Building Committee is an, it can be independent of...
I think they're bigger than the School Building Committee. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yes, and we told the School Building Committee that we weren't gonna put the school on the warrant because we had too many questions, or on the ballot for November because we had too many questions. So if we had too many questions, those questions that we had in August, it would be great to articulate them just as a body publicly, so that they could begin preparing some responses, regardless of what happens with other things, they can still start to figure out what the answers are.
I think it's even bigger than that. But so here's what I'll do. I'll, we'll meet with them again, say, "Okay, we're gonna put it on the agenda. What do you want to come forward with?" How's that?
That would be, and by "them," you mean the School Building Committee or the...
They can bring whoever they want, but for right now, I'm meeting with the chair of the school committee and the superintendent. And I believe Mr. Milano speaks with the superintendent on a regular basis. And to me, that's, you know, I get the role of the School Building Committee, but to me, the school committee are the ones that have to make the ultimate decision on what we want to move forward on here. Do you disagree with that?
I actually do disagree with that, yes.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Because they have, they have people on, the school committee are sitting on the School Building Committee per what was created at town meeting. And I think that it's apples and oranges right now.
It's like the fire station situation, right? The fire department doesn't do all of the fire station planning. We have a committee for that.
For that.
That also includes folks from the fire department.
Okay, Mr. Cohen.
Personally, as far as this is concerned, I feel that our getting the senior study changed everything, because now it made the MSBA a more realistic possibility. We may, you know, we may get this money. It brings a much more realistic possibility. So now, until we hear back from them, I don't really know what, personally, I don't know what my questions are, because we're kind of in a holding pattern here until we hear back from them. What are they, you know, what are we gonna get for money? It changes everything.
I don't want to, I think we probably are straying a little far from the agenda item.
I agree.
But that's, but it was, the question was, you know, what are our questions? And this puts kind of a, changes them.
So I will do that for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Future generatums, we just covered one. Any others?
Future meeting dates.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If I may, I'm starting to sound a little bit of a nag on this, but it's now October, and we've talked about the menorah, and we're voting on the trees. I would love it if we could, not necessarily have to be next, it doesn't have to be in October, but in November, if we could talk, discuss the possibility of a menorah lighting ceremony.
Did you have a vendor that you thought, someone mentioned to me a vendor?
That's what we're working on now. We've been working on some pricing and availability.
It's all about the, I know it's in my, to your point, it's on my radar, believe me.
I know it's on my radar. I just feel like publicly bringing it up.
I think the question was finding the vendor to purchase it from.
Great. Thank you. That's it for me.
If I have to go steal someone else's for that, I'm okay, I'll, we'll just, I won't tell anybody I did it. We'll borrow it for a night. No, I'm only kidding. No. So I'm, that's definitely, I mean, we did, it's, unfortunately, it's not something you can just go to...[1706.97]